Yes, I think we've.
Welcome to the Peer Board of Education, this special meeting is for your volunteer and you all for taking time under the busy schedule to be here tonight. The meeting is called to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. That's the button.
One pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with public comment. I do have a couple of comments first tonight. We state from the board, the board meeting is a meeting of our school district business that is having a public, not a public meeting. The board sets aside time for public comments. It is not in open form and request presenters address the board. The board will not respond to those making public comments, but may direct the superintendent to follow up with the presenters. That lack of response should not be construed as agreement or disagreement with those comments. It is merely a board statement of compliance with the Open Meetings Act and the posted amendment for this meeting. The board do not publicly comment in public on any student or employee and ask the presenters to be respectful of any person they comment about. Please keep your comments to five minutes and we will begin with Kipper LeBar. I said that last name correctly. Get them on up, yes, welcome.
Hello, I hope you can hear this microphone. I'm Kipper LeBar. I am parent to three boys in three different buildings here in LeBar. I am also the president of Murphy PTC and Mr. Mondry was invited and spoke to our group twice at our November fourteenth meeting and at today's February twentieth meeting. I've been able to be a part of every focus panel group and I feel that my input has been respected and taken into consideration throughout this entire process. This has been a great process with the communication during every proposed meeting and every change that has been exemplary. He has kept us all in the loop throughout and I truly feel that my participation matters and I thank him for allowing me to be included. I support his vision and the direction that he is taking now, yes, and thank you.
And next we have Mark Watson.
Can I do it right from here and walk up there?
We all want to see you.
So that's my, that's my first line here is this first impressions. And the man right there is going to give us the first impression on Sunday's headline. Is it going to read, "Board presents bare bones bond issue"? That would be nice. And taxpayers supported large tax increase? That would be not so nice. So tonight's meeting is going to be the launch of the campaign for and against the bond issue. I think that's what this meeting is for. And I think first impressions are really important because people form an opinion very rapidly on issues in this town and then it's hard to change your mind. So I'm hoping the presentation tonight is going to be a bare bones presentation. Here's what we have to do and here's what if you don't do that, if you don't do it, here are the consequences. And laid out with Ronald Reagan bar chart assumptions in the paper. Hope you're providing it with some good information so that it'll be straightforward, easy for people like me to understand and encourage me to take the right path, which I believe is the right path. You know, like the first way that I think you guys have done and gals have done heck of a job putting it together. I don't know what you've come up with yet, but so far you brought the public into it, I think as best you could. Sometimes people don't want to participate until they see the headline, "Large Tax Increase." And then all of a sudden we're just all activists. Right now, now we're concerned. Now, now we want to find out the facts and it's obviously not the way to do it. So congratulations on what you've done so far. Nick, I hope you're going to write a real positive, informative article. I'm sure you will, Richard, who was ever going to do it. Because this community does depend on the education system to take us in the next forty, fifty years. Without a new, good, efficient school system, we're not going to make it. Thank you much.
Thank you. So that does segue into our strategic meeting presentation. And yes, this is an important meeting tonight. This, well, we have important, I presume, is a really good opportunity. I know you've had some information given to you, you've had to digest a lot of things. Get your base line up with everybody else, ask the questions. This plan has gone through a lot of honing, changes, and so now this is our opportunity to get our final thoughts into this and give administration, you know, a way forward, what we want to do next. So that's why we're here. Let's get started.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And we don't normally comment on public comment, I just want to thank folks for taking the opportunity to come forward and share their thoughts with us. You know, I think the reason why we involve so many people in the process and we will raise a couple of slides and speak to the number of community interactions we had. I think it's really important to do that, to get as good of a direction as we can. We talked over six hundred people since September, face to face, eyeball to eyeball, from middle school age students to, you know, some of our oldest, you know, alumni and everybody in between, parents, staff, business owners, local elected officials, to try and, and just throw some of these ideas out there, see what was going to gain traction, what got pushed back. It's been a lot of work, a lot of work to fine tune this plan and we hope for further fine tuning tonight. And my primary goal, Tom and the board this evening, is to present our recommendation. And there's a range of options that presented with provide a number to support and to give us as administration a clear direction for our Mark VI meeting that we present a resolution to either you can, that we can support as an administrative. So with that, I'll, I'll move forward. Do you have all that stuff, yeah? Do I have a different presentation here? No, you got your screen. Okay. So what are our goals? I think this is really important to take a moment before we dive into specifics. If we don't understand what the goals of any organization are or of this plan, we're going to fail to understand what limits our vision and what informs it. I think, I'm not going to read all these to you, I think people can peruse these. I think some important bullets to point out, bottom of column one, the maintenance of our current year round program offered to kindergarten eighth grade is going to be an option for families in this new 2020 vision. We want to further expand our role in the community. What, what does that mean? We have spent considerable resources to make LeBar Community Schools a more legitimate partner in the community with local businesses and that has been to our collective benefit. We want to continue to expand our role and be a more viable partner for businesses other than just asking them for money to support local organizations and sports teams and donating money to the football program. We have a very rich and deep connection with our local business community and they have a lot to offer our students. We want to expand that. And we want, we do want to reduce the overall footprint of the district, the last bullet. We, we have an opportunity here to streamline the operation, to save operational dollars, to operate fewer buildings and to be more in line with the number of students that we have to service and the number of buildings that's going to require to do so. I think that's really important to understand. I think some people, you know, there's a range of reaction to this. Wow, this is a lot of reduction, closing a lot of buildings simultaneously, a lot of change all at once. But in my time talking to the community, I've also heard a lot of feedback like, "We like it, why is it going to take so long? Why can't we do this sooner?" Questions like, "What happens if the bottom doesn't pass?" Right? What are the options then presented to the district? We'll talk about all that tonight. But I think it's important to say, most of these, most of these bullet points, if you look at them, really speak to growth, expansion of academic opportunity, creating a better product educationally that we deliver to the students and our families. But we also have to keep a very keen eye on the finances that are required to do that and let our taxpayers know that we're going to do so in a fiscally responsible way. So the process, very quickly to review this, we created a strategic plan in 2012 and we have been monitoring that and its implementation since, since it happened. We've had about all over a year long kind of internal deliberation about what some of the things that you're about to see would mean. Focus panels, focus groups, surveys, video presentations, community engagements. We have a consulting firm, Bonnet and Bonnet, that works with local school districts and municipalities to gauge where people in the community are at on initiatives like this. And as I said earlier, talked to over six hundred people along the way since September. This proposal evolution for the board is, if you look on the left there, you can see that the initial community engagements prior, prior to going public with this, what we had proposed. And you can see the number of iterations that went through as the focus groups and the community groups and staff groups got a hold of it. Lots of different changes. A couple of aspects down there at the bottom, the site location of central office, alternative ed and virtual learning varied throughout the entire process, where this facility might be, where our alternative setting might be, where some of the programs that were housed in the center of renovation, where they might end up. Lots of feedback on those issues. If those of you that were at the initial focus panels, you heard a lot of discussion about community groups wanting to share some space with us and what that might look like. That's gone through several iterations. And the final focus group presented the, the concept, you see there on the far right, which we'll talk a lot about today as the final configuration proposal. And we'll talk about some of the benefits and the drawbacks of that. And just for everyone's information, this presentation will be available on the district website before the end of the week. So if anyone's, you know, rigorously taking notes, don't worry, all this will be made public. So what is our plan after, after all of that? So our proposed district structure utilizes these six facilities. The second row is the grade level configuration at east of, at each of those sites. So we want to maintain TRL as an early childhood center. It is our most recently renovated elementary facility as an early five and kindergarten center. And the student population numbers is the, is the fourth, fourth row. The current high school, or we title as the East Campus, would be home to our elementary program, grades one through four. Roland Warner would be a intermediate school concept, grade housing, grades five and six. Zemmer, a middle school concept, housing grades seven and eight. The West Campus would be home to our new comprehensive nine twelve high school and we would convert Schickler Elementary into our alternative high school and virtual learning center, both housed in the current center of renovation. So what you don't see here are a number of current buildings. Maple Grove, which the district still owns, houses, we rent the majority of that facility to Community Mental Health. We maintain a portion of the facility for some virtual learning, we maintain that. Our operational costs, as you know, are basically covered by our rental payment with Community Mental Health. The Cranston Facility, which is home to our LeBar Homeschool Partnership, will be maintained as such. The bus garage will be maintained as the current transportation center. And this facility, the administration and service center, will remain intact. If there's anyone else that wants to say on this particular slide. So this is the, this is the structure. We currently operate thirteen buildings in the district, including the ones I just mentioned. If this had reduced the number of buildings to ten, we would close and market for sale Mayfield, Lynch and Murphy Elementary Schools. As the board has seen in the packets we sent earlier this week, there is money set aside in the bond for site viability costs for those three buildings to make sure that they are maintained and stay marketable throughout that process. As we know, from the white facility, they might not sell as fast as we want them to. So you better put some money in the market and then maintaining them. So let's talk just for a brief moment about how this ended up in this fashion. And again, please don't hesitate to ask any questions throughout. I don't have to get to the entire process to wait to answer questions. Considerable discussion, if we're just focusing on the elementary program, at the focus groups that our board members attended. Concern about the original proposal, which called for only one or two grades in an elementary facility, for example, like grades one and two at Roland Warner, grades three and four at Zemmer, and then we had a proposal that had grades five through eight at the East Campus site as a middle school facility. Lot of concern about the number of transitions, really wanted to keep our elementary program, the bulk of it, for three or four year experience for our kids. But also a lot of discussion that our current elementary facilities are really insufficient from a number of aspects, particularly when you look at things like a lack of access to elective facilities like tech labs, gymnasiums, art music rooms, science laboratories, things like that, that we just don't have independently at each elementary facility. But if you were to adapt one of our secondary facilities, they would have access to all those types of things. The other piece that came up quite a bit in discussion about the East Campus as a convertible LeBar Elementary housing this many students, is the idea of breaking the building up into pots, right? So instead of having, let's say, twelve hundred first and fourth graders throughout the entire building, that the East site lends itself very nicely to sectioning off parts of the building for first graders, second graders, third graders and fourth graders, and then having separate office structures to service to those grades. So, you know, secretaries aren't processing all sick kids and all parent calls and everything at the same, at one site that we could, we could divide some of that, that would load. So the site itself lends itself very nicely to that. This idea was put before every member that attended the focus groups and they had a number of options to consider. This was far and away the pop, the most popular and well-received choice for a variety of reasons, the one, most of which I just mentioned. So the idea of transitions, the idea of having access to a secondary facility really spoke to folks. And if you look at how things are divided, students in early five all the way to fourth grade are pretty much on the east side of town. So from a transportation perspective, sharing staff perspective makes that a little bit easier. And then students in grades five through twelve ostensibly on the west side of town. Keeping Schickler as part of the plan really came down to evaluating the use of this particular building. The original plan called for ASC to be converted into the alternative high school and virtual learning center, but the cost to replicate this facility someplace else just proved to be too great. And that was a pretty easy reduction. Board members in the committee process had some little bit of foot on that particular cost. But to convert Schickler into a secondary facility is relatively cost effective, as you saw from the packing percent. So, and its proximity to the rest of our secondary facilities makes sense in terms of kind of right here in that central part of campus with, you know, Mod and Roland Warner and Zemmer and then the high school. So that works. So at the bottom, we've obviously got some minor, moderate and substantial renovations to happen at each facility. And, you know, before we get too far ahead of ourselves, I know a lot of people, a lot of questions I got from parents in particular, looked at this and said, "Holy cow, how are we going to do all this at once?" And if and when the board moves to support this, this configuration plan and then subsequently the bond, and then if and when the bond is supported by the community, we have a three year window to develop a transition timeline, to figure out from a construction perspective how each facility will be upgraded over that time period and then how it will transition all staff and all students simultaneously in the same year. So we'll get to the timeline in a moment, but just to jump ahead for those that are still uncertain of this, none of this goes into effect, this configuration, until the fall of 2022. So 2022, 2023 school year is when this plan will go into, go into effect. So we have essentially that much time from November 2019 until then, the plan for the So costs. You have been given, and I want to point to your packets that you, right at your table, you have, if you look at the third page, the third page, it looks like this, it has priority one, priority two and priority three costs contained. So in the building, by building breakdown, you'll see that same, those same three columns highlighted in the far right. What the, what the administrative team is recommending is the priority one, this first line, a total of ninety-seven point seven million dollars for the entire project. And you can see, if you look in the green column, every single item by building, what that entails. That being said, in the committee process, when we initially presented this plan to you, there were some members that wanted to see a plan that was less than ninety million and what could we reduce out of the original plan to get to that number. We will also identify for you what things we remove from priority one to get to that eighty-nine point eight. We also had some members that said, "We think this is an opportunity to ask for everything that you think could possibly need in the future." And the total of that proposal would be one point, one hundred and two point five million and include all items articulated in priorities one, two and three. So essentially what we have today, our challenge before us is to look at the proposals ranging from eighty-nine point eight to one hundred and two point five and identify which items you're comparable as a full board, including or removing from that list.
Yeah, I don't understand.
Sure.
In this first packet where you had the proposed evolution and the prior community engagement to have the campus website as community center, we don't have community center here. So is that ideas on?
We will talk about that. Great, let's talk about it right now. Great question.
I'm just like, is that where we are with that?
I've only said this about a hundred times, so I've forgotten a couple of things along the way.
No, that's cool.
The question for the, the members that didn't hear is, the original proposal included this community center idea, but I don't think it doesn't have that, that language in it. Didn't, from our perspective, Jan, did not get the support, the widespread support we had anticipated for that concept. And essentially what we were talking about was partnering with local organizations, other public institutions, private entities to come in and provide services to both the community and our student and staff population simultaneously. We did, however, hear a lot of support for the idea of local businesses having the opportunity to utilize our facilities, let's say after hours on the weekends for trainings, development, that kind of thing. And also more, let's say, project based learning spaces where they could come in and work side by side with their kids. We still are talking to groups like McLaren, who still have significant interest in providing like registered nurse services to our kids, maybe perhaps having a clinic in there. But to call it a community center probably would make a lot of sense. Just wasn't the widespread support for that concept?
I was concerned because I used to work at the health department and bringing in immunizations is a great idea. But what we used to do is satellite clinics in LeBar and North Ranch and you can't do that with the chickenpox vaccine.
Okay.
Because it's a, it's a, it's a live virus and it has to be kept in a freezer at a certain temperature and that freezer must be calibrated daily. But I was thinking how, or on a regular basis? And I was like, we used to do satellite clinics, how? Because if you can't offer all choices of vaccines, you can't pick and choose which one you want to offer. The health department can.
Sure.
Unless, unless that's all changed.
I don't think it has. The other thing, and that's a good point, it's, it's this idea of, if you bring in an outside entity, are they also servicing the public at the exact same time that your facilities are open for students and staff? And there were a number of people that expressed concerns with the ability to secure that site, how do we do traffic flow? And although I believe that from a vision perspective, it's probably the way we need to migrate, I just fundamentally believe that the taxpayers look at all these different initiatives that get presented to them on an annual basis, different ballots, different proposals. And, you know, as a taxpayer, as we all are, you kind of sit back sometimes and wonder, don't these groups ever talk to each other and see what they can do together to offer something that maybe, you know, is, is a uniform service or, or sharing of staff or sharing of a facility? And so our attempt at that, Jan, I think was the first step for the community in terms of, let's, let's take a step back and see, what services do we offer? Let's not compete with some of these folks, let's share services, let's share staff, let's share facilities. From a legal perspective, when you're talking about one publicly funded entity compared to another, there really aren't as many barriers as you might anticipate, right? Sharing services. Where it does begin to get sticky is if you bring in a for-profit entity and they're using a facility that was government funded, right? So for us to bring in, you know, we had conversations with the library, for example, legally speaking, there are a whole lot of barriers to that, right? They levy operational dollars, so you've got to kind of figure out how do you navigate that in terms of their staffing, their operational costs, their technology costs. But those are just logistics concerns. I think we're probably a few steps away from having a facility that, that looks like that, actually.
Oh, so it does appear.
Yeah. Yeah, great question. So as we go through this today, and the reason why you were giving the numbers in advance, it was two hundred and fifty lineups, there's a lot of, a lot of things included in here. But just to give you an historical perspective, we originally, when we did the focus panels and focus groups throughout a range, we think we'll be able to do what we're proposing somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred and twenty-five million. The current range is between eighty-nine and a hundred and three, and that's very specific. We've gotten very granular with these recommendations. And Barton Mellow, the construction management company that we work with, their original estimate to us was a hundred and twenty-six million. So we're really proud of the fact that we've gotten this thing down into a very, very manageable number and it gives the board a wide range of options, very specific recommendations that you can make to us about items you want included or excluded in the final proposal. And yet, the final number for the taxpayer is very palatable and we'll get to that momentarily. So the priority one cost, this, this sheet, the total of all of the green column items per building is here. The major items included are on the far right column and certainly do not represent the totality of what we're proposing. But someone, for example, might look at Lynch, third from the bottom, and say, "Four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, if you're closing the building, what is that for?" And I referred to it earlier in the original slide, which essentially to maintain the viability of that site, if we don't sell it immediately, meaning you want to maintain heat, you want to secure the facility so it can't be broken into and vandalized, because the minute you shut off all electricity and heat to these buildings, they begin to degrade significantly. And that affects the marketability of them. So we have set aside money in the bond to, to put money into that. But you look at each building that will be maintained in the district and you can see the major items that the total project costs include. It's important to note, from a bond perspective, that these are estimates, right? We work as, as hard as we can with all parties involved. We have legal firms, we have our construction management company, the architects, we've got our own internal team that scrutinizes these numbers. If in fact, and there are many variables that impact the ultimate tax burden on the community, the major one being property values, right? So as property values continue to rise, you need to levy fewer mills to get the same amount of money out of them and the bond tax burden becomes less. If we don't spend every dime of this money, the tax burden in the community becomes less because we didn't, we don't have to levy mills to raise that money. So you try to articulate these numbers as close to what you think you'll need as possible. So the eighty-nine point eight million dollar option, which is option one A, reduces seven point nine million dollars from the priority one list. These are the major items that if the board said, "Matt and team, what could you live without? What would you prioritize as a reduction to get the total bonded figure to less than ninety?" So we looked at each item and these are the proposed reductions that we would take out if pressed to do so. And we can provide rationale for that. And we can provide rationale for any one of those, should you require that. I won't go through every one of them. But those are the team, the folks that we work with, our directors, principals, you know, folks, a lot of input on this. And we also have a prioritized list of what we would reinsert. If you asked us, what do you think is the most important out of this list? But that, those are the major items included in that, seven point nine million to get us down below ninety. Yep, go ahead.
My, my one concern when I look at this list is I see the reduction of new buses. So I think one of the things we really want to know, what we need to do as part of this, is our bus fleet. So can you explain to me how we can really take out twenty new buses?
Yeah.
Since we really need to replace probably all of them.
Is that brand new or used?
These are brand new. The short answer is because Linda said I could. Linda, you don't let it talk when you're here. Yeah, it's, it's, we want, the priority one list is what we want. But if given the choice between the reduction of other items, there's two hundred and fifty line items, right? This is, this is where we're at. Can we, can we do it with thirty instead of fifty? The answer is yes, but does it put strain in the long-term viability of rotating the fleet on a continuous basis like we do now? Does it mean that long-term we'll be buying new buses sooner? It does, right? But to get us through the next, I don't know, Mark, you want to articulate this better than I can, I mean, it's.
Well, what I'm looking for is it going to put us in a similar position that we are today with kicking the can down the road and replacing the buses like we are currently kind of managing?
Sure.
Or is it doing the right thing and getting us the buses on the plan that we need on the rotational that is?
Before I answer that, we answer that question specifically. There's nothing on this list that isn't important.
No, I know that.
It's just the prioritization of what do we think is, can you live without and still deliver that overall?
Budget-wise, I see it from a different perspective because I think it is kicking the can down the road. You go and replace everything, then in twenty years, you're looking at the same situation.
Well, let's speak to that again.
That's, that's what I wanted.
I would rather see replace less and work toward a budget solvency to buy more.
We will speak to that issue right now. That's a great point.
I was going to say, that one.
Most districts shoot for somewhere between a eight and ten year replacement of your fleet. Depends on miles, depends on state police inspections, a lot of airiness, okay? Our winters, our weather, our corrosion, the salt, et cetera. Right now, we're on about a sixteen-year replacement for our sixty-five buses. Buying four, as Jan pointed out, leased, two-year-old, less than forty thousand mile buses. At the five million, replace the whole fleet would allow us to do somewhere which you're suggesting, get the fleet totally new and start working towards a nine-year replacement. So operationally, we would start to have money set aside so that when we got to the ninth year, we could buy sixty divided by nine and replace those buses. Obviously, we have two things going on as the enrollment's going down. And the less, we won't need as many to replace. And what we've been doing for the last sixty-eight years, as, as we've had that shrinkage, we're using our best old twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-old buses as our reserves. So one breaks down, we still have that bus to put on the road. So it wouldn't be necessary, what you're saying, is we're, we're going to buy them all at one time and not replace anything for fifteen, twenty years again. No, you would get back on that normal cycle from a budget. Every nine years, you know, in the nine-year cycle, replacing those buses. What it does is buys you nine years to start building up some capital set aside for that first wave of replacements.
As long as you can do that. Because we would have to put that as a priority.
And this really is a completely financial issue.
The last time I was involved with moving bus purchases, we bought them from a neighboring school district that weren't that old and only driven on paved roads, right? I mean, so that's fine if they, they use a common campus. But I heard there's any problems.
That's true. That's what the leased buses that we've been buying for the last five years. But that's not the same, that's not taken into consideration. I see Mr. Thomas in the back. They have changed just the mechanic rules from the engines, the transmissions, the allowable component parts of what you have to. So this is, it's a dynamic model. It's constantly changing. So yes, some of those are out there, Jan, but they may not, we may not be able to buy those in a few years if they keep changing the rules. So currently we have, but I don't anticipate that'll last forever. We know, for example, state police have changed the rules and made it much tighter on their annual inspection, what they're allowing and what they allowed for the last four years. So we have, we do get concerned with the red tags. If we do too many, we won't be able to have enough on the road in a given day until we get it replaced.
So again, our initial charge was ask, we, and these are just things that we've identified, right? The reason we gave you the details is because you might say, well, how come this isn't, you know, on the list? And we would prefer moving that or adding that or adding that back in. And that's the deliberation claim is, hey, I don't think that we should reduce it by twenty. If you reduce it by ten, I only save a million, but I want, I want to see a plan that has forty new buses down there. That, that's, that's what we're here for, what you guys can live with and what you support.
Man, I just wanted to be clear, even the dollars left on the Mayfield for being in, but that's really contingent. You use those dollars if these places don't sell.
Correct.
Otherwise, the dollars.
Go back.
Go back.
Are not used. Correct. That was, that was.
Reduces the bottom.
It reduces the bottom. It was an easier reduction, obviously, because it's just a number that we have identified, best, best guess, research-based number of what it's going to take to secure the facilities and maintain them for X amount of time. You don't really know. It's just, you know, working with a search management team and architects and getting the best guess we can, so. But when you start talking about bus reduction, that's a real number. That's a real number. So the proposed project additions, that if we included priority one, priority two, and priority three items. Priority two includes additional money put aside for furniture and furnishings, where currently we have some new, but the plan does call for a lot of utilization of existing furniture. We would move stuff. We, you know, the oh-seven bond paid for some new, a lot of new furnishing, so that's up to be moved. Additional district technology improvements, more bleachers and an additional restroom, facility at the athletic complex. Priority three, HVAC control panel upgrades and then new auditorium and theater lighting upgrades at the east auditorium. So those were things that we identified as important, but not a priority one and not part of our recommendation. But should the board require additional rationale as to why those weren't included or you desire to see them added into priority one, we can have that discussion as well. So if you asked us, what would we reinsert to priority one if we didn't cut it? Here's what we would do. We'd say the most important things are the roof at the east side, the buses, elementary site demo cost, putting those back in to make sure we had enough money to cover those costs and district technology, in that order. Have a rank order of what we would, what we would do. And then that is also subject to your, your discernment, your, you know, your debate as a board about, you know, maybe we think technology is more important than, than the roof, and we want to have that conversation. So as we have been presenting, we're using the most recent data of SEV that we have available. Add a hundred million dollars at a twenty-four-year, three-and-a-half-month bond term. It would be an increase in the debt levy of two point three eight mils. It would equate to the average homeowner over about fourteen dollars and eighty-three cents a month. They're about a hundred and seventy-seven dollars on an annual basis. And as I said, any number of variables can impact that. So if we request a bond amount less than a hundred million, property values rise. That SEV is based on last year's information at seventy-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-three of average SEV of the home in LaPierre. That variable can impact it. Any number of things could lessen or increase that, that amount depending on what the board decides. But this is just a good, solid number based on the information we currently have on hand. As a frame of reference, we wanted to compare similar-sized districts in multiple counties, the total amount of current debt they have on the books and the amount of mills that they levy in each of those communities. So in LaPierre, if we were to achieve the two point three eight millage increase by an affirmative vote of the community, that put our total millage debt levy at five point one eight, which means we'd still be lower than seven of eight of our surrounding communities and in similar-sized districts and similar communities. I, we only utilize this as a frame of reference, not, it's not good or bad. You know, we didn't dive into the detail of each of these bond campaigns, what they funded with that money. But it just gives you a frame of reference that what we are proposing is not out of, out of line with what other neighboring districts are levying, and still we have millage rates that's significantly less than our neighbors. So the timeline looks like this. Today's presentation deliberation, March sixth. We'd ask the board to vote on both the strategic plan and the bond election language, which we'll send you in advance to review. If supported by you, the campaign would officially begin on March seventh. November fifth is election day. And if we get an affirmative vote, we'll begin the transition planning for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and it would not be complete until August of two thousand and twenty-two. So the real work of this process from this point on is, is fine-tuning what recommendations to use aboard support. If, if we vote to the affirmative to support the report on March sixth, then, then the campaign phase begins. We have been in information collection and plan development since September. We have done our level best to get the best information possible. And now we've got to start making some decisions about what we really want to include in this plan. My personal perspective, really proud of the team, really proud of the process. I believe honestly that in the last eight years, we have demonstrated the ability to do more with less in this community, provide a much better academic and extracurricular program than we have in years past. All the data indicates that the district is on the rise. You saw our home figures in our last presentation. Things are looking good from an FTE perspective for the first time in almost two decades. Academic achievement is up. Unparalleled success in the last four years is continuing to trend in the right direction. We're financially stable, and we're providing more and better programs for our kids, which is our ultimate goal. So personally speaking, and we, we're adding money to the fund equity we have three of the last four years. Those are all good and healthy signs. The district has moved in the right direction. I think, although this is a very ambitious plan, the fact that we can save an estimated billion to a million and a half dollars of operational costs by streamlining these programs, I think is very good. Demonstrates again our fiscal responsibility. We have to spend money to do that. What is the cost of doing nothing? The cost of doing nothing is we have about thirty million dollars in identified major renovations and upgrades that have to happen to make the current facilities viable. That is money, folks, we currently do not have. We are going to close buildings irrespective of what the board decides on March sixth. So if the board decides on March sixth for whatever reason, Matt, this plan is not what we, what we had hoped. We don't want to support it, or if you do support it and the bond vote fails in November, we will continue to lose students. That trajectory is, remain unchanged, and we will not require thirteen buildings to manage around four thousand students in ten years when we get to that number. So we will have to figure out a way to close buildings, reassign staff, redraw attendance boundaries, redo transportation, and reduce our overall operational cost. We would not have the capital to do that in the short term. So it would be a very slow bleed over the next eight to ten years. And we would be proposing cuts to academic and extracurricular programs to make our budget balanced on an annual basis. That is just a fact of, of human business. What I wanted to do was present a plan that was modest, but was a, as best can be, a once-and-for-all solution for our district from a configuration perspective. And when you look at the six, the five buildings, Turl, Bonham Warner, Zimmer, the middle school site and the brand-new high school, and add Schiffer there, you're going to have our best facilities available for all students for a number of years to come. And, and that is a solution that even if we gain students, let's say the, the worm turns and we get new development, we have room in those buildings to grow, but they can house the number of students we currently have and what we will be reduced to as the data tells us we will be reduced to around four thousand students. So I'm confident in, in the campaign. And just based on the number of interactions I've had with a variety of community groups. I was asked today at Murphy, and people can speak to this. Somebody said, are you surprised that there isn't greater resistance? And the honest answer is that I am. I thought that elementary communities would be really, really up in arms about losing their neighborhood schools. I was particularly concerned about Murphy, pleasantly surprised by the reaction we got there. There is a lot of open-mindedness reaction to this. A lot of people saying things like, the writing's kind of on the wall, the heavy lifting was done with the high school merger. People expect this type of change. They're more prepared for it than they have been in years past. So I, I was, I'm surprised by that, but also cautiously optimistic that we have to continue to educate people as to why this money needs to be spent, what are the benefits of it, and what are the financial and educational benefits of why we're doing it. So with that, I leave it to you and open it up to questions, both about the configuration and/or the bond. And then what I really need to hear from you guys, like the bus issue, for example, is what items you want to see as part of the final proposal? That way I can get to a bottom-line number and draft a resolution that you can support.
I have a question about the mills.
Sure.
So mills are determined by, the number of mills you levy is based on your property values on the calendar.
Mark, you want to give a?
The number of mills that, the number of mills that will be required to be levied is a function of your outstanding debt of principal and interest. So first variable that comes into is when you sell the bonds, there's, there's a multitude of ways that you can structure it. Some, you pay a higher interest in the front end, some you pay an even straight line across it, some you do it on the back end. So depending on how that schedule looks, it changes your principal and interest payments. That's really what drives the amount of money needed. So that drives the amount of mills based on the total taxable SEV value at the time.
So if you're comparing between districts, you also have to look at property values.
There are definitely different variables.
Right, okay, that's why I'm trying to, we're going to have to gain more because we don't have as high, right? We have to levy more because of.
Property values have been growing. State CPI is two point eight. I'm going to guess LaPierre County property values, well, we see it come out here very shortly. If they haven't already started to come to homeowners, will be somewhere in that two and a half on upwards. You may see some folks pushing towards double digits, point frankly, in certain pockets because it's all based on assessors, and there's much better formulas than there used to be ten, twenty, thirty years ago. But that's what's driving the economy. If you just look at the general economy, CPI, cost of living increase has been at that two and a half, three percent. You'll see that. So that's what we're anticipating. When we did our what-if scenario originally for the numbers that Matt put up, the hundred and seventy-seven based on a hundred million, that was roughly a one and a half percent property value growth over the future years to come up with that estimate.
My strategic is just going crazy in the fact that, does anyone have any data on what's like a baseline that taxpayers are willing to, you mean like from the state, like our consultants, do they know that if you go over a hundred and twenty-five million, you're not going to get passed or anything like that?
No, those are really community-specific numbers and figures. It's really more about what is the actual dollar per annual basis that they kind of consider. What they have done, consultants have done, is take a baseline of the community right now, and they look at things like perception of the district, perception of the communication of the plan, direct benefit they see to them, direct benefit of the community. So they take a more kind of holistic look at it, and then based on that, they'll say, and they will take, they will take a temperature gauge kind of throughout the process, like every quarter, okay? You've had two months of campaigning and information of the community. Where are they at now? Is that moving at all? So it really, it isn't a function so much of the number per se. They look at your electorate and they say, and they. and they say, and they find out what is their palate for what you're selling, right? And right now, they said, without any campaigning, their initial figures show us at about 0.44, which means 44% of people without a lot of information support the plan, and you've got to get seven points in the next, you know, till November to get it passed, that is a really good starting point, without without information.
How are they doing there, are they overcoming these people, are they, what are they saying, what are they doing? Are they giving this information to the people that have heard about this for less than?
Yeah, these are professional, these are professional bond election firms, and they have access to voter records, voter caller information, history, they have done surveying and auditing in the community, and they also have worked with us in 2007, so they compare that data to not only school district elections, but other, like the roads village, the library village, other initiatives in the community, they know LaPierre very well, and based on that information, that's what they provide us, they, they helped us pass the '07 bond, and they also work with me personally in the merger with two high schools.
I have a question. It's been a community concern about an understanding that over a million dollars was going to make a group, when in '07, '08, with that bond, around that number, so what's the issue with the roof, Maple Grove, needing $335,000 at the roof?
That the roof is shot.
So we didn't do anything to the roof 10 years ago?
I can, we did not.
We did, no.
It was patched.
We didn't do that gym area, we did the rest of it.
Yeah, so we've got, you know, we, we have been patching that roof for a number of years.
So they didn't do the gym area?
Yeah, the rest of it.
I mean, that's feedback I've heard in the community.
Sure.
That required, we not, we put a lot of money into Maple Grove with that foundation, that one.
But it's still sustaining, right?
Yeah, that, that's a tricky one, because it's like, do we put the money in to maintain the relationship with CMH, if we decided to close the building and sell it, you know, they, they would have to find another option to do so, but because it's neutral operationally, it's not costing us anything, so it's, it's just a discussion to have, there's also the possibility, and, you know, I'll say it publicly, but with the asterisks next to it, you know, is there a possibility of cost sharing with CMH relative to some of those facility improvements that they would be willing to do? We've had conversations with them in the past about purchasing the facility from us, there are some limitations legally that they're dealing with as a, as a government that can purchase property, leasing is really their very few limitations, so we've had that conversation as well. But it's also why we moved it as a priority, why I took it out as a, as an itemized reduction recommendation.
Was there any data on how much construction costs have increased over the past five years, what, 2019?
Mark, Bart Mel, provide us any like periodic cost in terms of construction?
I haven't, but we know that the treasury allowable rates from $200 a square foot were actual brickmore, there's a higher number when you do all-in from all your mechanicals and lighting and stuff, but that's part of their expertise that they lend in partnership here of giving those costs, there's an inflationary factor they factor into based on recent, now that's it, if you had some astronomical, you know, simultaneous world casualties of hurricanes all at the same time, and there's a shortage of gypsum or building materials, then obviously you get spikes in valleys, or petroleum, petroleum's been very steady, you hear me talk about that in the budget, you know, if we see a spike in petroleum going to $100, $120 a barrel again from its current 40 to 50, yeah, you're going to see a cost, does it relate to two times the cost that we just talked about? No, but there would be a 10 or 15% premium.
You know, with money this much, you're looking at a small increase in cost.
And what you have with the overall bond issue like this, is you're going to have positive bond variance on bids, and you're going to have negatives, so some are going to go over the original estimate, some are going to come under, and by the time you get to the end, it usually works itself to the relative number where you're at.
If you don't use the amount when you pay the bond back, right? Like the contingency, let's say we go for the contingency, you can give it back.
Yes, I mean, if you sell, you sell it off, because it's another variable, because how many series do you do it in, one series or multiple series, let's say you do it in two or three series, that third series you sell, but you don't use 5 million of that, and Matt, you just turn around and pay off your principal and interest, which just lowers your interest debt, which again goes back to my original answer to you, then your future mills required to cover principal and interest debt goes down, so you get a savings there.
Safety and security, that's been an issue that's peaked and valleyed, we're confident now that with this, we're going to see some, I could say significant increases in security in the buildings, that we will kind of peek it open.
Yes, yeah, when you look at the itemized breakdown, Mike, you'll see things like single-point entry, more video cameras, integration of those things, things that multiplied over multiple buildings become really cost prohibitive, while we can really hunker down into those six facilities we can, we can do it for.
I've been around here a little bit, not one year have we won our budget, right? And we said, hey, we've got money here, we can do something, and we're always, and so when you're, when you're talking about, you know, closing buildings and we can save X million dollars, that's not like saying, oh, good, well, that's X million dollars on a savings account that we can tap, because every year, the costs continue to go up, the number of students continue to go down, so we're going to cross in that gap, every year, we have to figure out how to get through it. All the wonderful job getting us through those times. So I just wanted, you know, say, to make it clear that closing this isn't going to like free up money, it's like, oh, now we can buy buses, it does, it doesn't work that way, this is really a strategy to get us, to get us right to what the future. At the same time, during all of this time of cost cutting, we've been able to raise money to have a lot of improvements, the athletic complex, and the things we've done in schools, and I, and I also remember, you know, hearing this a long time ago, but how hard it is to turn the ship around. What I've realized over the time, because I see presentations from all of these teachers coming in and telling us what they're doing, that you see what's going on with our scores, right? Our academic scores, they just keep climbing at a rate higher than other communities, but you can turn the ship around, when you get everybody helping, you grow, and that's what we've done. Now, you're saying all these things because all of these things are coming together, and I really think this is, this is what's next, this is what we need, we don't need to be saddled with, we've got a reducing population, let's deal with the problem, let's deal with it now, get this done, and I have full support of that. Renting the buses, if there's a way to manage to get in the buses without having to use bond money to do it, I'm all for it, that's what you're here for, and you're helping figure it out, but I'm definitely supportive of what we're headed, and I appreciate all the work that's been put into this plan.
So take along with the money, Mike, what we're looking at is a choice between, are we going to be a 4,000 student game district, slowly watch it slip away, or are we going to be the best 4,000 district we can be? That's our choice, and you face those choices and so many other things, but I, like you have said, it's managed team development, you've done a really good job of moving things in the right direction, moving things in the right direction, in some cases, again, it's pretty significant, I've still been able to do it, and.
Yeah, this is a lot of money.
But on the other hand, for folks that are getting a little bit late, this will be the last thing we'll be for a great long time to hope if we do it right. And we need an explanation, should I ask this before the meeting, I have a question, what are the DDC controls?
Those are your automatic controls for your HVAC system, so that they're all accessible by computer, so for instance, when we've been, use this room when it's been hot here in the springtime, I'm texting Mr. Meiser, I'm at home, and he's on his computer, he's actually adjusting the, the system in turn, the AC on remote.
What Mark actually says, Matt looks like he's swaying.
And turn the heat down.
So it allows you to.
Which has nothing to do with temperature.
It's, that allows us to site manage, but what it really does is allows us to have all the setback temperatures for night at midnight to 6:00 AM on weekends, to manage your whole facility without an individual around touching any terms that.
I know that, but it also exceeds millions of dollars.
It is, and we already have a system, and that's why you see it's way over in the third level, but at some point, like everything that's technology-related, systems you have become obsolete, and there's better and more efficient systems that come down the road, that was basically the native professionals, there's probably better stuff than we already have, but as Mark says, it works, it's working, so we don't need to replace it, so that's why it's priority three for us.
Right, and with respect to security, I mean, there are, I don't know that we have the finalized, you know, plan or footprint, even if we do, I hope we don't share, but I see specific numbers of cameras where each are winged, and those aren't hard and fast, I don't think.
What they're based on, Mike, is overall square footage, so in a 200,000 square foot facility, this is the number of cameras we record, but based on the configuration and design internally, it may be more, maybe less.
Right, okay.
So is there an overall target number that the board is really focused on, that we present in two weeks on the sixth, that you're going to be comfortable?
I don't want to have a target number, but I want to reiterate something that Mike and Mike said, you know, we're going to take time to do it, we better do it right, you know, remember, I think it was 2004, 2005, you know, you guys ordered to redo the parking lot at West within two years and scrubbed it, right, if we're going to do this, we're going to make sure that people we hired to do it are doing it the right way, first off, second off, if this doesn't pass, I remember sitting in finance and operations community meetings with you and Peggy and Gary, and we were debating for three, four hours, are we going to go with, you know, cleaning schools on alternate days, certainly don't want to go back to those days, those were not so fun debates.
Those are good types of things.
So if we're going to do this, you know, priority one, you have the roof at East, might as well do it, put it in there.
What we did, and this is, and that's, that's a good point, you know, when we sat down, and there were seven different meetings with Mark and his team, Bart Mel and their team, both additions and deletions to this plan, and what I want to commend both Mark and Bart doing is going to folks like Doug, Lindsey, and Michelle Bradford, and Pete Bull, and Ken, people in the buildings, hey, this is what Bart Mel suggests, is this working? And when they really want to get a pat on the back from me, people like Doug, Lindsey would say, Matt, they've got way too much here, we can reduce it, that's the right answer, Doug, keep finding those reductions, right, but they are just using rough estimates, and you really have got to drill down into the specifics of what does our program need from a facilities perspective to support the work we're doing, and so these numbers are as close to accurate as we can get them, because the building hasn't been designed yet, right, these are just, we need X amount of square feet for science, X amount of square feet for storage, X amount of square feet for office space, right, the average classroom will need X amount of square feet, you extrapolate that out, these are the numbers that you're looking at, okay? The design process is yet to happen, they'll take these raw figures, and we will design the facilities to mirror that, and what our people have already done the heavy lifting of is, we don't need, you know, an excess square footage in these particular areas, this is what we need, this is what we currently have, these are our needs, so when we really get into the campaign phase of this, we can defend these numbers to the death, because we know, our people have told us, we can run a great facility with this amount of square footage, or this amenity, or not have that amenity, so that's why we're very confident in the number, but we also had to say, okay, what are some things, and a good example is the restroom renovation at Strickland, this is credit to Mark Meiser, so there's a couple hundred thousand dollars, and they're going to convert all those elementary-sized restroom facilities to be secondary, which is appropriate. Mark, Mark said, hey, that's a reduction we can make, we can do it a lot cheaper if we do it internally, our own people, we're not paying the markup contingency fees, architectural fees, engineering fees, we can do that, now, that's something on a small scale, I'm not going to have Mark do that to build a wing-up new high school with our people, but we can renovate restrooms, so we were able to take out a couple hundred thousand dollars from priority one to say, we can do that, so we did look to the idea of, you know, what number of buses could we purchase with general fund, how much longer will the roof at East last, can we do that as a special project four or five years down the road, so those conversations have happened, it's a sharing of costs between, you know, general fund expenditures and the bond, and that shell game Brad of, you know, what goes where, but to your point, we heard you in committee, this is not, we, we want a program that does two things simultaneously, right, gets everything we think we need, but also doesn't go overboard, so the community says, what, what is this, you know, you've got, you know, this special amenity over here, and the superintendent's offices, you know, 25 by 25 feet, and bolted ceilings and that kind of stuff, that's where districts get in trouble, right, they think, this is our last chance. Right, no, I have a St. Office in the plan, if we have to, no.
I want to make sure this is covered here.
I have, Mark's going to punch a skylight in the ceiling for me, that would be totally annoying.
I think the biggest thing to think about, people look at this number, and it's a big number, construction costs are high, it's not like your typical house, and we're comparing it to our personal budget, and I think what's most difficult, I teach us in economy, I teach nonprofit, is that, given a bond money, it's going out that year, it's, it's an in-and-out kind of like your household, and if you don't make, you know, contingencies or savings account at your household, and don't plan to repair your roof or put a new roof on, it eventually is going to add up, and I think that's what it's ballooned, because for the last 10 years at least, we haven't got the dollar amount for the extra to do because our funding has literally decreased, and that's dictated by the state, so I think that you have to look at it from that perspective, that we could say, oh, we'll buy 10 buses later, but we really don't know where the state's going to sit as far as funding is concerned. So, you know, again, it's just, I think again, to take that, a step back, is that, again, this is where we're going, this is doing what we have to do, and it is going to cost, I mean, it's a dollar amount, but it's.
That's the thing that I really like the best about this plan, is all the feedback that you got from the community, and now if you sit back to where, where we originally said this is what we want it to look like, and this is where it's being proposed today, is really taking a look at the buildings that we already spent dollars at, right, in 2007, we spent dollars at, and mostly that's the, the students that are going to remain in those buildings, and then really taking just a look at what is our better buildings at the moment, and conditions, and reutilizing as much as we can to come up with a bond at a dollar value that isn't the Taj Mahal, we're really looking at building the best for our students, because we want that best 4,000, right, but utilizing all the structural and even the assets that we have within it, right, because you're looking at even in your, I think priority two, furniture, you know, furnishing, so we're looking at what can we reutilize now, so, I mean, I really support the plan, I don't know if it's, what is the right number, but what I want is to make sure that we're incorporating the things that we really need to do today, that helps build that best 4,000 student district for us in the future.
One of the things we talked about, and I've mentioned this with some of the community who's I've spoken with, is you look at, let's just use your current elementary school as an example, they have a principal, either a building hero, or working with students in a full-time center job, and people look at, you know, the average elementary school, let's say it's got 400 students, and they say, wow, we're going to have this very large elementary school, that's going to be a lot for those three people to handle, well, obviously, we. Well, obviously, we would look to take out some of the savings and provide those, that building with greater service, you know, a principal, perhaps an associate principal, a full-time dean of students, maybe more than a secretary. There's going to be a lot going on in that building. So I don't want people to think that this is about cutting the repaired bones. We're going to save money operationally if we do this plan, that is a fact. That you cannot fight, that is a fact. When you, when you close three buildings and reduce the operation by that much in one year, you will save operational dollars. Out of that savings, we as a board have to identify what services do our parents and students find most valuable that we have cut over the last eight to 10 years, like deans, like building paras, like that office support, the things that were really servicing people? And how do we reinject some of that? Because we have fewer buildings now, we can put that support in. Security is another, one of those items, right? Full-time hall monitors. We have three full-time school resource officers, right? That you put money into people because that makes the most difference in things like customer service and security. You can buy all the gadgets and technology in the world, but if you don't have good people, right? And we've had to reduce some of those positions to make our budget meet every year. So I don't want to get into the position of it's buildings versus people. Personally, I'm not married to Burden Moore. To me, it's about the academic program, the experience kids have inside the classroom. It's not about the address in front of the building, it's about that experience inside the four walls of our classroom and the people that we can bring in there to provide that service. That's what we have to be fixated on, that's what it is. And I, and I feel like this plan gets us there. Yes, is it, is it emotional to lose a neighborhood elementary school? No one can argue that. No, and you're, and you're naive to think that there aren't emotional attachments for buildings. These are good buildings, these people aren't doing anything wrong. It's not like we're unhappy with Murphy or unhappy with Mayfield or Lynch or Shippel or whatever. They're doing great things and those buildings have developed cultures inside of them, not just within the staff and students, but the neighborhoods. This plan, I feel, yes, transition is always hard, but it provides a better academic program because of the consolidation of services that I'm not multiplying times five, the consolidation and collaboration of our staff who are now all under one roof. The fact that our kids begin and end their entire LaPierre community schools experience together. We begin to build that LaPierre identity as D5s and kindergartners and we've articulated through all together. To me, that's really important. And I am fortified when I talk to the community, yeah, that idea of one LaPierre really resonated with people when we did the merger and they see this plan as in line and congruent with that concept. And it's hard to argue. And that's really when you look at the far left, when you look at all those transitions, people didn't articulate it, but they felt this is too choppy, right? There's too much transition, it's not as congruent and consistent and smooth as we'd like it to be. And then it was funny to watch people's reaction to what we eventually presented to you when they saw it, like, oh yeah, that makes sense. That, that's what we were, that's, that's, that makes sense. And, and so I was, I looked at all 600 sets of eyeballs, right? Looking and presenting this as many times as I have. And I, I'm just very confident that this reflects what people were trying to tell us in those community forums.
So I know certified the year round, is year round on with this or is it interwoven?
Interwoven and it's, one of our original bullet points was we're going to keep the year round program as an option Jan for all students in grades kindergarten to eighth grade that we currently have. And actually, one of the parents at Murphy this morning brought up a really good point, which we had talked about. A lot of people who like the year round, just, let's say if you're a Murphy parent or you're a Lynch parent, didn't want to move schools, right? You say, I like the year round concept, but just from our family and driving kids to and from and picking up for soccer practice and ballet, it doesn't make, it doesn't work for us. But if it's there and it's an option and it's available for all, heck, I might do it, right? So we actually feel this is going to be a boost to the year round program because it's in every building, Turl, the East Campus site, Blomhorne, and so on. Why is my home calling me right now? They know where I'm at. Kids. So that's, that's, and really, the original plan, if you look at it, says we were going to maintain the year round program at elementary. That got the most pushback from Turl. Which really, that was my first kind of like, maybe I'm not really good at developing plans because they, they did not, the staff and the students and the families there said, we don't want to be on an island until fifth grade where everyone else in the district is combined and going through together and then our kids join them as sixth graders. Staff said, well, everybody gets to collaborate except for us, we're out here on an island to ourselves and we don't, we want to be a part of that. So that was just, but they were nervous because, hey, this, we don't want the year round scheduled to end because, don't forget, all those teachers and administrators, they selected to be in Turl, they selected that schedule. Every person in there chose to be there. And there's a power in choice, right? We chose it, we want it. So they were just happy to know that we were still going to continue to offer it the same way we do now at the school, within a school model. And that was really the first major change to this plan. Okay, so if Turl doesn't want to be a standalone K5, that was option one. It was like, okay, we got to redo this. We put those options out, the focus panels, focus groups, people were like, eh, not feeling it. And that's what got us to where we're at.
Hi, I, yeah, I guess when, like, are we making a decision tonight about this number we have or what do we?
I, well, I asked and, and, and a lot of people said, there's not a number in mind, but I've been taking notes. I have with the team go back and look at what the discussion was tonight and make some decisions about additions or deletions from, from the number. And I think I'll come back to the resolution.
I'm just concerned, $100 million sounds a lot more than the, it just, I'm just concerned if you, if you go with the higher number, it will be more of a challenging campaign. And if you're saying you can save money by closing these elementary schools, then why wouldn't you have a number? I'm just, I'm just, I need to really research this more myself, but I like, I don't know. I don't know what your consultants are saying, if there's that much difference between 90 and 100 with the pulse of the community and what they support. 100 million sounds like a lot more than 89 to me, so.
Can we send us the difference in terms of actual dollars to people, one versus the other? Is it 114 bucks a month, is it 115 bucks a month?
The 100 million, that, that's, yeah, I can do that. But to say there's a difference between 97.7 million and 100 million?
No, no. But with the unknown climate like we heard two weeks ago, not knowing the budget from the governor and school financing and just the variables with everything, yeah, we're living in a good market right now with houses and that a lot in the market, but not even knowing yet what community, it's just, I'm only concerned if I have to do that way. It's like, I want it to succeed, I want it to pass, I feel we need to change. So if you go higher, I just, it can be a bigger challenge or.
You definitely, our, my, our recommendation was priority one, 97.7 million. I felt in, as you do, that the sticker shot of 100 million dollars, I cannot disagree with you. And our, to get our level best, to get it as close to 89, 90 as possible. That was, that was our, my challenge to the team in going back, so I did not want to come here tonight and say, all right, best case scenario is 101 million dollars. I, we can do it for 89, you see what that excludes, right? You see what 102.5 includes. And our challenge, if, if it's the consensus of the board, that you want this team to present a resolution that's closer to 90, 95 million as opposed to 102.5, we've got a variety of options to do that. If you have particular items that you feel very passionate about, either you want taken out or included, that's what I need to hear. I've heard buses, I've heard the roof at East, I've heard security, a variety of things.
And you stated that 44%, a survey that was done, 44% with not a lot of clarity around numbers or.
Is likely to support.
Likely to support this, all right?
Well, that's just polling, right? That's not, that's not.
Just polling, no.
It's a formula, yeah. It's a, it's a, it's an audit formula, it's not anything that is, it's scientific, but it's not like, hey, all we got to do is sit back and we're going to go, yes, on November 5th, we got this. But it's a test, it's a stat, plus or minus a couple percent of points. If it was 20, if it was 20, right, we would be, and, and they, and these consulting companies also determine whether or not they're going to continue to work with districts and municipalities and towns based on some of those numbers. They might tell you, this is not the right time to do this. The current audit numbers and the formula tells us, you don't have the support, it's a major uphill battle. If you've got to get 35 points, it ain't going to happen. But when you're less than 10, you know, that is about the campaign. We can, we can educate the community to get, to get seven, eight points.
I know, we talked about just, do you know if there are going to be any, any other ballots posted?
We still don't know. So the clerk's office has, had merry calls, whatever, once a week? Yeah. We, we anticipate there will be some.
Do you know?
I don't know. I don't.
I don't think they have to know, it's like, coming early until July or something.
Yes, yeah.
So. I guess I wanted us to address a point that Lisa and Tom brought up about the buses. We've been playing bus numbers for years. And the problem is that when you start to set aside the buses, then that becomes also a very desirable pool of funds to upgrade at some other point, you're going to need something else. And so I don't really want to see you cut the bus money personally. We're going to be moving more kids in some cases further than we have in the past and we're going to need some serious busing and some beefed up buses.
Is that, is that universally, is that worth, I'm just saying a lot of nodding heads?
I just know that also from the forms and things that you've heard, is busing is so important to these parents in this district. And we continue to shave back on what we want to do to help support this overall plan, it just makes me a little embarrassed. I mean, I know we could work it in the budget somewhere, but like you just said, like, it could be something that we could take away and do something like the roof. If the roof needs to repair, obviously, we're going to probably pick the roof, right? We just put money into this building, we're going to need to put the roof, repair it or do the right thing and put a new roof on, right? So we will pick that over buses again because we try to just kick that can a little bit down the road because the bus garage is just such a great drop, right?
Well, and that's really, if you look at that itemization, we've put significant dollars into the bus garage to pay the entire lot, upgrade that facility. It desperately, desperately needs an addition to the new buses. So that, because, and I think to your point, because the burden on the bus garage, we increased going from three to two tiers, right? Keeping, trying to keep those runs as close to an hour as possible, that we want to make sure they have the resources available to do that job.
And we haven't fixed our darn roof yet, so we're still working on that.
Yeah, I don't know what's about the buses because I think we can, we're talking about 104,000 students, I don't think we need 40,000 buses in the future. So I met the fours, not quite a 50 bussing. I think that, again, you could do some leasing and get by until that time.
And if you're saying now most of the elementaries live on the east side of 24.
No, I didn't say that, I just said that the buildings that service elementary schools is around the east side, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't say.
Mike mentioned earlier, since we've been on board since all five, we've cut the budget every single year. And where was one of the things as we went through the list was putting up and putting up and putting up getting buses. And they have done an awesome job with the buses we bought that were used or even keeping.
Linda, did you buy a water fruit basket before this?
But I, yeah, I agree, I don't want to be 80 to 40, but.
That one is a little lower.
20, yeah, I, yeah, we don't have to do that too much.
And I'm for the East too, I think that if, that's a lot of money, if we don't include it, we're just looking at the problem in the future.
The roof.
I mean, that's putting all around elementary school in there, I don't want to see buses all over the block. You're putting a bunch of little kids in there, I don't want buses throughout the water.
So looking at, right, if everybody's looking at the front major, the possible, possible priority one reductions. If we just go through the list one by one, the two new operators in my mind that, because you've already touched on one, that we can get rid of right off the bat, is the Shippel restroom renovations. If we can do a cheaper in-house and probably better in-house, right, Mark, because we got really good employees, then I say let's cut that one right up from the get-go. Same with the furniture at the new high school.
And is the roof, is the roof at Maple Grove just on the gym? Is that what you said, Mark?
What's that?
The roof at Maple Grove is.
It's the last addition that was put onto the school. It's a gymnasium opening.
It's leaking?
It's been leaking.
Because the other ones on this list, with the exception of maybe the reduced number of buses from 50 to 40, we got to have a roof at Maple Grove and the high school.
I think we've shown a good past, present or past ability to get rid of our buildings or sell our buildings that we closed. So I, I'm in agreement with reducing the 100.
Reducing the 100.
I don't think so, probably around 100.
That is also an area where there's, there's no weather, right? There's no, we're not cutting it forward, we're not reducing anything, it's an estimated figure.
I don't want to see it here, but it continues.
Because right there are arguments aside over 100 million dollars.
I've seen districts get in big trouble when they're too small on what they ask for. Huge trouble and then they couldn't build, so.
I think between now and March, we should go back to our contractors and ask them to shave whatever they can shave, help us in this. There's one thing on this list that I would like to see. We, we have a gentleman sitting out there at Skinner Lake, it's a great classroom that we can utilize more, but we do have some issues going on there with the roadway going in. If there's some way even getting a little bit into that. That's unique to our districts, it is. Not every district can say they have something like that and every one of our students are able to use that at some point.
And then this plan includes salvaging any, any decent, anything out of all the schools that you're.
Yes.
All the furniture or anything?
You got it. There's some that we can, that we can reutilize, desks, yeah.
It reminds me, in terms of furniture, when I first got on here, a long time ago, we had kids that were your size, man, you know, fifth grade now, whereas they were providing seats with fifth, seventh. And are we keeping up where we know there are furniture that actually fits the kids through the buildings or, because there are some pretty significant furniture numbers in here, but if we need it, I can't imagine frankly, much more important than that. Because I'm uncomfortable and not anymore.
Right, right.
You're, you're seeing a lot of elementary schools migrate to a flexible seating model, right? So there's a variety of types of chairs and seats and all manner of ways to sit, stand and relax, bean bags to Pilates balls to low crates, which you think.
It's almost like furniture, though.
Low crates are huge, so, traditional desks. So you walk in an elementary classroom, it's, it's a lot different than a useful one for that purpose. The difference between the size of someone, to use your analogy, me and you, I don't know if that variance is.
I remember when the first thing you had, you had a check or, I mean, seat, this kid walked in, he was about six foot four and about 250, and he was a sixth grader. He didn't want to hurt other kids on the flag football field. And, you know, we're all looking at him, he's a sixth grader, what can we have here that would possibly fit this job, right? And so we, we do have some pretty healthy numbers in term of furniture, but yes, what I'm really asking, we do need this, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not utilizing the furniture we bought with the bond in 2007 as well.
Right.
It's still good, good furniture.
But even back then, it wasn't nearly enough.
No, it wasn't, Mike, you're right, but we are going to pull all that furniture and reuse it in this.
Well, I'm glad you said that because we know up here that, yes, you're going to. Because we reuse everything here. And if we can cobble it together, we will, and we'll put it back out there because that's what we do. I think we've got one chance to do it, do it right. And I, I, I don't wanna go over the top. I think Mr. Mason was absolutely right. I think this is the point where people will pay attention, is now there's gonna be a number. And I think what I'm concerned about is some of the folks who said, yeah, I'm all for this, if they didn't know a number, they changed their mind a little bit.
Twenty-four percent.
Well, don't forget, don't forget, every single focus group, we put that range out there of seventy-five to one-twenty-five. And I said in every single public forum, I think will be around a hundred million dollars. I said that every time I presented this. So, there is an awareness that that is a figure that's worth floating around.
Ninety-nine though, sounds a different, don't you think?
I agree.
Everything on TV is nineteen ninety-nine.
Priority one is the, is our recommendation.
Right.
I think for ninety-seven, seven, with everything that's included in priority one, we can have a one heck of a great plan. I, I, we believe that. The team has thought over this, to, to your point, keep it under a hundred, get it closest to ninety as possible, and just, it's more digestible.
Number the six might have a ninety-five. I don't know why.
Well, and this is why I say, is, this is the time to go back to contractors. You say, how badly do you want to build a building? Because if we can get it to a magic number of ninety-five, we're more likely to get there. And they can help you get there.
Would you sit Mark Meisner on?
Keep it as a, ninety-four, five, or ninety-five.
And it may not mean that much per, I, I get Mike's point about, it may not mean that much per person's household.
Per month, per year.
But the number itself just cares.
You still want those numbers.
And I still have people that ask me, that haven't heard of it.
Because I think people are gonna look at how it's gonna affect their household.
How does it affect?
How's it gonna affect their bucket they have to load?
What a better school district has been increased the ground. Isn't long, I don't know if they're looking to sell it. Yes.
What I also want, and I agree to do this as part of what we're putting together, I, I want to know those pieces that help us not only improve our, our, the environment for our staff and students, but make it better for our community. Because let's face it, we need more people in our community who don't have kids at school than do. And, you know, it's always, in words, it's, how is this helping me? And I, I think we've done a really good job, we've done a really good job promoting a sort of sense of community. And I think we need to keep that going. And I think there are lots of things that all we're gonna do for our community by having a great school district. You know, we've heard, they say it's a city means. You know, a, a great community, a good community depends on a great school district. They all look at that. And I, I think to keep our community viable, and we need young people here. We need to draw all the young people here. And we need to keep and retain the great staff that we have. We need to do all of these things, and keep these things in place. But I, people wanna know, how does that help me? And I think if we can develop those talking points and get those out there early, not that you have already, I know you have.
We have, but?
But what we've got, I think, is a great feedback from a really small group.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, yeah. And, and it's, it's a bit of an echo chamber, which is why there's cautious optimism. But I will say this, I did receive the same feedback when I talk to the same group of people about the murder of the high school. Okay, there was same people, same types of folks, I was asking at those initial. And then I thought that would be me, short of the tenure of LaPierre as a superintendent, after my first couple of community forums, I'm like, I don't think they like this idea a whole lot. Can assure me that we'll get it done. She was right. But to your point, people ask me all the time, why do you speak to sixth graders about this plan? I'll tell you one small anecdote. Number one, I talk to sixth graders and seventh graders and tenth graders and twelfth graders, because I want them to know what's happening in their school district, whether it impacts them personally or not. Because they are gonna be the future parents, taxpayers, citizens, business owners in this community. And you want them to leave their school experience with a positive feeling, not only that they got a good experience out of what they, what they went through, but that their school district is also making positive changes. So, that isn't a variable that prevents them from moving back here. That's number one. Number two, they are great ambassadors, right? As parents, we're very selfish. Nine times out of ten, if our kids are happy, we're happy, right? I, I went and spoke to a group of Lower and Warner Student Council students. The next day, I spoke for about forty-five minutes. The next day, a teacher in our district sent me a video of two of those girls standing in front of their classroom advocating for this, and articulating everything I told them, ins and outs of the plan, what buildings were being considered for closure, what the new configuration might look like. Our students are keenly aware of what we're talking about right now. And they were really thirsty for information. And so, don't think they're not paying attention. And I want those kids to go home and say, Mom and Dad, we talked to the superintendent, here's why they're doing it, here are some benefits, here are some drawbacks, here's what we think. Because for the most part, if our kids feel like they're a part of the, we're doing it for them. But oftentimes, as adults, we do it for them without asking them anything about it. That's the biggest mistake school districts can make, is these are your quote-unquote customers. Why don't you ask them once in a while, what you think you're doing is working? Actually does. And there are things that we do that don't work, that, that's a fact. There's no one saying this is the purpose of the district, everything we do is this golden nugget. But there is a lot we do really well. And getting their feedback on this was really, really critical. At least in, in forming my opinion of what you see as the final plan. It was informed by, I hate to say it, some sixth graders, had some great input.
Speaking of things we do really well, I congratulate Turl's bowling team. They're doing really well. And I went to the jazz band concert Friday night, and I highly recommend everyone to go with our jazz band, it's also very awesome. Just thank you, honestly, Matt, for taking all this extra time out of your schedule to meet with all these people, clubs, everywhere in our community, to really get the pulse, to be able to have your team work out all of these fine details that you presented us, to be able to review and really make, you know, a very good decision for our district board. I mean, it took a lot of time, and I appreciate every bit of it.
About worth it. Yeah, I agree. I'm gonna take everybody back. Someone who weren't quite there yet, but we've always been this, been around for a while. It was kind of a joke about ten years ago. He said, all we have to do is reinvent the policy of location, we'll be fine. Because Lansing was throwing all of these things at us, and we had all of these requirements, and we needed that part of it, and we never stopped. And everybody sat around the table, like, how are we gonna deal with this? How are we gonna cope with all of these things? And that was sort of the running joke for a while. All we have to do is completely reinvent the process, and we'll be great. We sort of have. And with the help of some really great folks, you've been able to put and face all of these things that have been thrown at us from Lansing. Well, this is the part we can, this is the part we can control. And so, this continues that mission and sets everybody in the spirit and for all those people that are coming, they look, we actually do care. And we do take our commitment to our community seriously. And if we can put our best foot forward, and it's, frankly, if this goes through, will be sort of the last time that they're gonna be asked to do this, hopefully for a very long time. And, you know, so, to continue that sort of reinvention of the process, this is the logical next step. When we get this done, we got one more thing to tackle, and it's healthcare. And we're still gonna, we're gonna figure that one out too, in terms of rates and how we're gonna address that issue. But it, it is, you know, the footsteps coming down the hall. You know, this, this is not new. This is nothing, we're not sneaking up on anybody. We've been talking about this for a long time, which is, you know, the best way to do it and the best way to sort of put ourselves out there. But it is a logical next step for all of the places that we've gone. And so, and it's something you're right on the money, make it go home. Four black, five black, whatever, going home. I have kids too in school, maybe I'd like to go see them do something. He does, he's still here, he goes and comes back. He makes a presentation, he makes a pitch, and, and all of you guys have to be exhausted, because you go right along with you, being prepped for all these things, and crunching the numbers on a daily basis. And, you know, that, that's great, you can do better. You know, go figure it out. You know, Mark Meisner, yeah, we can do, we can do this better, we can do this ourselves, we can save money here. That's not gonna happen. And gee, if we don't spend all that money, or we save money along the way, because other things are going to come, then, hey, we don't have to worry all those taxes. You don't have to ask all that tax money. And so, we're gonna have some more savings, I think, going through this along the way. All that being said, I, I am not looking for a giant number, nobody is, because it affects me too. On the other hand, because I believe we only really have one shot at this, I wanna give it, right? And, you know, I'm glad you guys brought up, like, the roof at East, I don't wanna compromise on that. I wanna do this, and then have to go back later and say, geez, we should fix the roof too. People are gonna look at us and say, are you crazy? Why didn't you fix the roof? So, you know, I, I don't know that there is a magic number, it's all too high, it's all too much money, and?
Anything more than zero?
You know, it's, it's a pact. You can throw that out there, and have the people and say, no. Doesn't matter if it was a dollar, it's a new pact, you're not gonna do it. But we need to at least represent our district, represent our kids, and say, this is the right thing to do. And so, let's put it out there, let's do it, and let's make that commitment. Because like I said, this is the piece we need to control.
That's right.
So, I think we're willing to do it.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for your input, and to echo what Mike said, to thank the team, because you're right, this has been a hard drive in several months. They do look exhausted, you're right. You're good. You're gonna get to sleep tonight, it's the real worst first tomorrow. But thank you to them for all their work.
Consider a motion?
Court, motion to adjourn.
And so, for, Mr. Stevens?
Aye.